All right. Good afternoon. The March 13, 2024 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now convened. Justin, will you please call the role today?
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Stottermeyer Wesley.
Chair Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Slick.
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez.
Not here.
Okay. I have a quick notice to read, so please bear with me for a moment. As required by state law, Prosper Portland has provided an opportunity for the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There is also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. At this time, the public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Okay. So first item is Commissioner Reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report this month?
Just one. Was at the Centro Gala. I don't remember the date, but we.
We can fill that in later.
Tended with Commissioner Stottermeyer Wesley.
Great.
Attended the Prosper event, was that last week? Week before that. It was last week.
Last week.
Time is running all together now, but it was a great event. It was nice seeing everyone there, so I thought it was a great way to end it.
Yeah.
End the week.
Broadway corridor.
Yeah. Broadway corridor.
Yeah.
I was also at the Broadway corridor.
Okay. Great. Great. Okay. All right. So that's great. Next, we have the Executive Director Report with Kimberly Branham.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. Good to be with you all. So I want to walk through a few celebrations and some key milestones and then note a few upcoming grants and engagement opportunities. So on February 22, was pleased to join many partners and Commissioner Stottermeyer Wesley at the celebrating the over 100 first-time homebuyers who are now homeowners supported through the Portland Housing Center who were identified through the preference policy. These homeowners were supported with down payment assistance and development investments from the Portland Housing Bureau and from Prosper Portland. Really want to congratulate the Portland Housing Center and a huge appreciation to Prosper's North Northeast team, especially Sharon, Charles, and Amy for supporting this ongoing partnership with the Portland Housing Bureau and PHC. On Wednesday, February 28, City Council expanded the downtown business incentive credit to include all of Portland Central City, including the Central East Side and the West End. Through the program, the city is offering a credit of up to $250,000 over four years to reduce business license taxes for businesses who re-up or extend their lease and commit to having at least to have their employees in person at least half of the time. This credit encourages businesses to lease Central City office and retail space, and I want to acknowledge the great work of our business advancement team in supporting this effort and in doing everything we can to retain and attract businesses to the central core. Want to express huge appreciation to our state legislators and the Office of Government Relations for their work during the short session. We were really appreciative that the legislature allocated $12 million total for Portland, I'm sorry, for public infrastructure associated with the Broadway Corridor project and the Omsi redevelopment project. $6 million will be allocated towards each of those projects, making development in the future of vertical of housing development more possible in the future. I also, we are also excited that there was an allocation of about $6 million in operating resources to support some of our key anchors in the Central City, including the Oregon Ballet, the Oregon Symphony, the Portland Arts Museum, Portland Center Sage, and the Portland Opera. These were all key anchors that were identified when we had conversations as part of the Governor's Task Force, and so really glad to see those key anchors supported. Speaking of events and activations and arts, in partnership with Travel Portland, the Prosper Portland Office of Events and Film is proud to announce the Scale Up Program. This is a competitive grant opportunity designed to provide funding and technical assistance for local Portland events that are positioned to grow and attract attendance beyond the Portland metro region. Grants are intended to advance the city's economic and cultural revitalization. Awarded packages will be a comprehensive program consisting of up to $25,000 in direct financial support plus custom technical, marketing, administrative, and logistical assistance provided by Travel Portland and Prosper Portland. Applications are open and close on March 27. You can learn more at portlandeventsandfilm.com/scaleupgrant for more information. Also want to draw your attention that March is Ticket to Dine Month, which is a great opportunity to support your local restaurants, who we all know were really impacted not only by the pandemic, but most recently by the winter storm. So during the month of March, Portlanders and visitors alike can explore more than 80 participating restaurants and eateries in the Central City and experience the many cuisines that the city has to offer. You can find out more at tickettodinepdx.com. And finally, the 20th Annual Northwest Youth Career Expo is coming to the Oregon Convention Center on Tuesday, March 19. The expo brings together the region's leading employers to educate high school students about amazing career opportunities in Oregon. Prosper Portland is proud to sponsor this event as part of our commitment to advance Portland and our objective to connect Portlanders to high-quality employment opportunities in future-ready sectors. You can find out more information on the Northwest Youth Careers Expo at portlandworkforcealliance.org. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next, we have some minutes to approve. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 14, 2024?
Moved.
Thank you. Have a second.
Still second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. You may now sleep. Okay. Next, we have a public comment for items not on the agenda. Justin, do we have anybody ready to speak? Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a consent agenda item. This is an action item authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with STI Nuco LLC for property located at 2021, excuse me, 2221 North Argyle Street in the Interstate Corridor Tax Increment Finance District. This is revolution, excuse me, Resolution Number 7523. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this consent item?
I motion that we can approve the consent item.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. That's approved. All right. Next, we have our regular agenda. Item seven is an action item approving commercial property loan and small business loan program guidelines. And Kay Little, Shelley Hack, and Oscar Novello will all present on this. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. My name is Kay Little. I'm the Asset Investment Manager here at Prosper Portland. Next slide, please. I'm here with the members of the Prosper Portland Project Team to seek approval of redesigned commercial property and small business loan program guidelines today. Next slide, please. The project team, along with 12 members of a community focus group, worked together to redesign the loan programs and to create a new one, which is our Acquisition Loan Program. As we embarked on this program redesign, we actually had a few goals in mind. One was to ensure that our loan programs aligned with Advance Portland, our Financial Sustainability Plan, and the TIFF Action Plans. We also wanted to make sure that we were able to increase transparency around how we looked at loans and what that underwriting process looked like, so that was something that was very easy for folks to understand. We also saw a need to really kind of look at and retool our risk rating and other evaluations on our loans and to kind of align that, especially with the new programs. We also wanted to reduce the number of exceptions with some of the programs that we've created over the years. Some of them had different features that maybe we wanted to use for different borrowers, but whenever we had to do that, it triggered an exception. We wanted to reduce the number of those. We also wanted to expand the eligible uses for our loans, create some additional flexibility, and also remove barriers that we could see were existed within some of those programs. And so that was the focus that we had as we moved through this. These goals influenced both the design of the loan program guidelines and also the updating and revision of some of the processes that are related to those loan programs. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry about that. So Prosper Portland's Financial Sustainability Plans identifies our lending programs as an important source of revenue to support our ongoing operations. Additionally, the Advance Portland and TIFF Action Plans call out lending as a key tool to actually support many of the plan's goals and objectives. And so our existing loan programs needed to be updated and new programs created to help us to achieve those goals of those plans. So now I'll hand the presentation over to the project manager of this initiative, Shelley Hack, who will discuss the key changes we made to the loan programs.
Thank you, Kay. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Director Branham. My name is Shelley Hack. I'm a project manager here at Prosper Portland and was the project lead for the redesign of these products. I'll be stepping you through the key changes that we made to the products and the processes to achieve the goals that Kay just reviewed with you. Can you, next slide, please. Next slide. Okay. So our first step was to create a new loan review process, and this provides greater transparency into how Prosper Portland will evaluate the loan requests. This process includes a baseline eligibility review, a risk evaluation, and an impact evaluation. And Casey's going to be stepping you through in more detail what that process will look like later on in the presentation. We've updated our risk evaluation process and are creating new risk rating tools for each of the products because the risk of a predevelopment loan is far different than a small business loan. So we're going to be refining those tools to be specifics to the markets that we're trying to attract with those products. And also, in the spirit of transparency, we will be posting these evaluation tools to our website so that, you know, possible applicants can do a review of their own transaction and see how it might fit before they make application. We've also created a high-impact designation during the community engagement process. The focus group provided really helpful feedback on how our existing tools are perceived in the markets and the type of changes that we could make to enhance them. One of the suggestions was to increase the transparency about when Prosper Portland will or will not entertain customized deal structuring and negotiation. And that discussion resulted in a definition of high impact that aligns with the TIFF District and our tax increment, TIFF Action Plans, Community and City Approved Action Plans. There are also some tax increment districts that don't have an action plan. So in those districts that don't have an action plan, the definition will be that there is a budget allocation and that there has been demonstrated, strong demonstrated community support for the project. What this designation will do, and the multiple benefits, is it will provide direction to staff on which projects they may exercise greater flexibility in deal structuring. It also provides greater transparency to the applicant and the community about what projects might be offered non-standardized terms. And as importantly, it will inform this body about what types of projects you can expect to come before you because those will likely have exceptions to the standard policy because we've exercised, you know, our greater flexibility in deal structuring. So the next few bullets are designed to reduce the number of exceptions, to provide greater flexibility in deal structuring even without the high-debt, high-impact designation, and to remove barriers to entry. So we've adjusted the maximum loan amounts. We'll review those in the next slide about how they've changed. We've adjusted the terms and increased the amortization periods as well as the loan terms. This will help us to achieve the, provide the great, the flexibility in deal structuring to support projects achieving the new 1.1 debt coverage ratio. And then we've also removed the equity loan-to-value and minimum leverage requirements, recognizing that those are often a barrier to entry. That's not to say that we're not going to evaluate those components as part of the underwriting process, but that they will be evaluated in the context of the entire transaction and not a pass-fail evaluation at application. Next slide, please. So the Commercial Property Loan Program will offer five loan products and with these corresponding loan amounts. The predevelopment loan, we are looking at increasing the maximum loan amount from 200,000 to 500,000. So this product is a redesign of an existing tool. The tenant improvement loan is, it has been, some of the program guidelines have changed, but the minimum and maximums have remained the same. With the construction financing, we're looking at increasing the maximum loan amount from 2 million to 5 million. Similarly, we're adding the acquisition component to the program guidelines, exercising some of the greater flexibility that we have with the Program Income and Strategic Investment Fund we now have available. And then we've also added the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which is a program that we administer on behalf of Multnomah County, where private capital providers can fund these transactions. By including these program guidelines here, we can actually act as that capital provider for some of these projects. Okay. So next slide, please. So the changes to these projects or products include, as I said, the addition of property acquisition, excuse me, because of the Strategic Investment Fund and Program Income Designation. We've also added middle-income housing as an eligible use. Excuse me. Which will expand our ability to help impact the middle-income housing goals of the city. We've extended the maximum amortization period up to 40 years. As I mentioned earlier, this will help us in deal structuring for those projects that may have a challenge in achieving a 1.1 debt coverage ratio in a traditional 30-year amortization period. We can step it out a little bit. We've also extended the maximum, the due date from 10 to 15, again, to provide greater flexibility. We adjusted the index as well to moving it from prime to treasury. Excuse me. Next slide, please. So I'm going to turn it over to Oscar Novello, excuse me. He's a Senior Business Finance Analyst here at Prosper Portland and was a member of the team.
Thank you, Shelley. Well, on the small business lending side, it's different. It's not so much creating new programs, but rather taking what we have currently and making revisions. So one of the things that we're recommending is to consolidate what we currently have, which is thriving small business, creating opportunity, business incentive programs into essentially one program. The reason for that is because we think that it's going to add clarity for both external clients as well as internal staff when we're underwriting. It's going to also, I believe, allow us to use different features that we currently have in different programs and reduce exceptions because oftentimes, sometimes we've wanted to offer one feature that's in one program, but because it's siloed and it doesn't exist in another program, we would create an exception when otherwise it would just be a simple approval. So we want to reduce that. We also would like to recommend extending terms such as the amortization and the term of the loans, the term for repayment. And we believe that this would actually help in some cases when someone just needs a little bit more time to make payments or to have a reduced debt service that they have to, they're obligated to meet. The other recommendation we're making is the elimination of the revenue base program. That one, we simply didn't have enough traction, and it, we believe that it was difficult to implement. And so we're actually recommending the elimination of that formally. However, it is something that can be done within the regular program that we're proposing to have. So in other words, this one program would essentially be like an umbrella program where all small business lending can be considered in one space instead of silos. Next slide, please. And one more. Okay. So during this journey that included both the real estate programs that we're proposing as well as the revisions of the small business programs, we definitely benefited tremendously from the participation of 13 community stakeholders that will be named in the following slide. In fact, let's give them a little bit of credit by going to the next slide, and then we can switch back real quick. So these are the 13 members that met with us over, geez, it must have been like two years. I think that, you know, we met six times, and we want to thank each one of them because these are folks that are either developers or lenders or, in some cases, technical assistance providers. And because of their connection to the community and the work that they do, we greatly benefited from their honest feedback. So we definitely want to thank them. We believe that as time goes on, if we need to bounce things off of them, we hope we can count on them. So thank you, all of the folks that helped us out. And then I guess, you know, we could go to the next slide. Yeah, we don't have to flip back. Thank you. So we, I told you that we met six times over a couple of years, and so you may be wondering, well, what were the meetings about? And there was a lot of discussion. Some of the things that we want to highlight include these themes that you see before you. They recommended looking at different programs such as acquisition loans, focusing perhaps on multifamily. We didn't put it here in the bullet, but the focus that came up often was to focus on middle-income family residential housing because that seems to be a need that's not being met. We also got input on just underwriting criteria. There was a consensus that we should lower the debt coverage ratio to 1.1. And there was also consensus that we should use different indexes. And so for real estate, we landed on using the US Treasury bond relative to the term of the loan. So it has to correlate to the term of the loan. There was also consensus that we should extend the maximum term of predevelopment loans. Currently, I believe it's two years, and so in some cases, some folks thought that was a little bit too tight. And then there was also consensus to increase the amortization period so that certain projects could pencil out better. Next slide, please. And then finally, in terms of equity, that's obviously very important, and the things that we wanted to keep in mind was, in doing all these changes, what impact equitable impact are we having with the community? And we're obviously very conscientious of that. And we believe that, you know, focusing on these three items that we have before you, focusing on high-impact projects is critical. Having that north star on our projects, you know, and questioning, is this a high-impact project, is valuable because we have a limited time, limited resources. And so we need to invest that where it's going to have the biggest impact. And also, we wanted to make things easier and give us a little bit of leverage in terms of working on deals that were high-impact, but perhaps for whatever reason, don't pencil out in traditional underwriting. And so for that, that's where we were looking at extending terms and reducing the debt coverage ratio. And then we also thought that it would be, and with the group's assistance, we came to the conclusion that it actually would be safe still to underwrite with no loan-to-value or minimum equity requirement because these essentially are barriers that are mitigated by the debt coverage ratio. So if at the end of the day, we're focusing on the debt coverage ratio, all these other criteria just stand in the way because ultimately, we're not going to be recommending something that doesn't make sense. And the debt coverage ratio seems to be the last or the strongest, I guess, barrier or safeguard. Maybe that's the best word in terms of our underwriting. And I'd like to introduce Casey Edmondson. He's our Assistant General Counsel, and he's going to be going over the process updates.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Branham. Thank you very much for introducing me. I'm just going to run through quickly the sort of standard process that you're all very familiar with for a loan from start to finish. Now, the action that is before you today is the adoption of the two new sets of program guidelines, right? These sort of process updates are complementary to that, but these are more procedural-level things. But it's a little bit important, I think, to sketch it out. And the next item you'll be considering this afternoon is an update to the financial investment policy, where a lot of the changes were made to support the loan program updates and the goals we're trying to achieve with that. So I'm going to touch on a little bit of that now to help your decision-making, and then I won't have to speak on it at the same length in the next presentation, I promise. Next slide, please. All right. So the goals of our loan review process are to, in accordance with the financial investment policy, determine whether a loan should be made, apply consistent standards for all applications to mitigate risk and enhance returns. It's all really like obvious stuff, but those are the north stars that we're keeping in mind. Next slide, please. So at the intake stage, the staff undertake an underwriting process, and the determination is whether the proposed loan is consistent with guidelines. That's the most important sort of baseline determination. One of the guidelines in each set of proposed guidelines is strategic compatibility. It's a baseline requirement and expectation, and that includes all agency plans and priorities, but in particular, a demonstrated lack of access to capital. access to capital in recognition of our equity interests in being a gap lender and a lender to businesses and folks who can't necessarily get the same offerings in the private market. Other key guidelines are, except for predevelopment loans, is the debt service coverage ratio minimum. And a couple of new considerations here. First is, well, we apply a risk rating now, but a newly emphasized risk rating evaluation is conducted by staff and basically, the credit risk is calculated and used to inform pricing. That is being more rigidly enforced as a guideline than previously. And finally, Shelley mentioned earlier, the concept of a high-impact project or a high-impact loan. I want to note that that is not a designation that is in and of itself part of the guidelines that you're considering today. But what it is, is a description of the fewer occasions where loans that may feature many exceptions will be brought for the board's attention and consideration. So it is meant to be a limiting description of when those kinds of items will come before us and really tying that very closely to board-adopted and community-supported plans and projects that have been passed in regular order previously. But in and of itself, that is not a guideline and accordingly, that designation won't get a loan any different review authority pathway than any other loan. They'll all be treated the same. If they have an exception, they'll require heightened review. Next slide, please. So this is just getting into more detail. This echoes what Shelley said earlier, but the working definition that staff are anticipating applying for high-impact projects are projects that align with an approved TIF action plan or if the district doesn't have an approved action plan, the project must have a current TIF district budget allocation and strong community support. And I will defer a little bit to Shelley for further questions about that. But next slide, please. And this is just going into, again, the risk rating, which again, is a guideline. A minimum of C is required to be within guidelines, so there is a little bit of flexibility. But loans that are too far down on the scale there will have to be considered according to a heightened review process as exceptions. So this is just describing a little bit of what the risk rating is meant to capture. It is basically the probability of default, the downside risk, the exposure, and then mitigating effect of likely collateral recovery, what kind of collateral it is, how easy it is to recover. And that also in the new formulation of our financial investment policy is a required consideration in pricing. So that will have to be taken into account for baseline pricing, the risk rating. The risk ratings will differ based on the loan product that's involved, based on the different weights that get assigned to factors like experience, for example, depending on the context and the complexity of the kind of project that's being financed. And all those kinds of nitty-gritty details are going to be worked out by Kay and Shelley and the lending team under the supervision of leadership as this project rolls out. And that's that for that slide. Next slide, please. So one change that we are making is simplifying the designation of the Committee for the Accountability of Finance and Equity, CAFE, as having sort of jurisdiction over the initial review of all loans and grants. Previously, it was worded in a strange way, but now that is really their responsibility. And for loans that are squarely within guidelines, they can delegate that to fewer than the full committee in the interest of efficiency. But we're trying to have fewer exceptions. That's, we're hammering that and that was a big goal. But, you know, on the flip side, if we have fewer and only the most important guidelines remaining, then you would imagine that the exceptions to those would demand greater attention from more staff members, from people who are higher up in the org chart, that sort of thing. And that's the balance that's been struck. So any exceptions for loans will need to be reviewed by CAFE. And the Executive Director will have authority to make loans with exceptions if the loans are up to $500,000. And then if it is a greater amount than that, then it would have to come to this board. Although I do want to note that the financial investment policy item you'll be considering does clarify what we consider to be the existing authority of the Executive Director to make loans over $500,000 that are consistent with guidelines. In other words, free of exceptions. We think that authority was kind of lost in the sands of time and we wanted to, you know, make clear that that authority was intact. So I think that, yeah, the rest of that just echoes what I just said. Next slide, please. And look at me getting ahead of myself here. I should have asked Justin to flip to this slide before I finished my comments. So, yeah, that's it. Not intended to affect any major changes when it comes to that. Most of the changes have to do with the internal review process before the Executive Director is given the loan for, you know, approval or disapproval. But we wanted to have fewer forks in the road, make it simpler and function with a little bit more of the efficiency that we're hoping for in making more loans, getting more money out there to help folks on the street. So with that, I will turn it back over to Shelley.
So assuming that the board approves the new program guidelines, these are the next steps that we'll be going through to move to implementation. The charter will have to be updated. We'll be developing those risk rating tools for each of the products. We'll also be working with the legal department to update all of the loan closing templates to be in alignment with the new plans, updating process manuals, marketing and outreach materials with the goal of being at full implementation by July 1, our next, beginning of our next fiscal year. So with that, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
First of all, with the increased period of time for the amortization, what's the return on investment for Prosper? And then also, with the removing the equity and all those other things that you had down there, where's the, where's going to, I know you said you're going to be evaluating, but how are you going to be evaluating, what's going to be the consistency to make sure that one's not getting approved more than the other? And so we can see the consistency and folks can see the consistency so that we're not having someone saying, well, you didn't approve me because of whatever reason. So what, so in other words, what are the protections for Prosper?
Mm-hmm.
And then also, what are the protections for our Executive Director, too, when she's approving something and it's just her name on there?
So let me take the, I'll take them in order. The increased amortization period, the return on investment is really going to be unique to each individual transaction. Is that, that the risk rating tool will be used to help determine the pricing based upon the grade that that loan receives through that analysis? And so if we're going to veer off of what the risk rating, the risk-rated interest rate would require, then that would be an exception. So each individual loan will ultimately require, consist of the return on the portfolio. So I can't give you a definite number now because each transaction is negotiated individually and will be priced based upon the risk rating. If there's an exception to that, then it would be an exception and it would come to the appropriate level for approval. Does that answer your question?
A little bit.
Okay. You have a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask a clarifying question, which is on this topic? So Shelley, are you saying that the return on investment won't necessarily change since we are currently evaluating loans on a case-by-case basis, but that currently, we're having to go for more exceptions in order to structure the loan in the way that feels the most appropriate? So it wouldn't necessarily correlate with the direct impact to the return on investment?
With the, we're shifting from a old pricing system that was risk-rated to a much more refined risk-rating process and that the margins that will be applied, and we haven't finalized the pricing structure yet, but the conversations we're having is that the margins that will apply to the different products may be different, which is not what was in the old system. The old system had a risk rating, okay, maybe you can jump in here because you're much more familiar with that old one, but it was, it was kind of fixed across products. Is that if you got a C and you were a business loan versus getting a C and were a predevelopment loan, you in essence had the same pricing. So the extension of the amortization period will not necessarily change the risk rating of that loan or the interest rate that we would offer. What the extended amortization period's intent is, is to help us work those deals that may be on the margins, that if you have a transaction that has, you know, it meets all of our other, you know, goals and objectives, but it has a 1.05 debt coverage ratio using a 30-year amortization period, if we can push that amortization period out to 40 years, then it reduces the monthly payment and thus increases the debt coverage ratio. So it was really, the extended amortization period was designed to allow for greater nuances in the deal structuring, not necessarily in the interest rate applied.
I was just saying, but that's leaving people on the books longer, even though you're reducing their payment, so they're just there a longer period of time?
So on the commercial property loans, we have, there's an amortization period and a due date. And so we have, and the lingo in the, in the industry is that you have a 30-year AM and a 10-year call, so that you have a 10-year balloon payment. What we're proposing is that we extend both of those, the 40-year amortization to help reduce the monthly debt service and then extending the due date to a 15-year due date so the projects would have a 15-year balloon payment at 15 years that they would have to go out and refinance. And then the, the other question about, don't go.
I mean, so that would still clear it from the books then in this about the same time period that we were looking at originally?
It moves it from 15, from 10 to 15 years. So unless there's something else in that project that, that is, you know, there's an exit or something that is inducing repayment, we would have another five years of that, that asset being on the books and five years, more years of repayment, amortized payments. What it would, the impact that would have is that we would not return that capital to our pool in as short a period of time. So it wouldn't be available for repayment.
Yes, I had one follow-up on that. So in a TIF district that has a time limit on it, are we keeping an eye on those time limits, making sure we're not bouncing up against the edge of when they expire with those products?
And I'll defer to Kimberly, looks like she's going to, or to, to.
Yeah, so one of the things that I think we are clarifying with the next generation of our tax increment finance districts is what happens with program income. And so let's assume that, I think, once it's assumed how that will all be, where the, where the program income would flow, right now, when debt is repaid or you have program income from districts that are basically done, it's going into the strategic investment fund. So it might be the case that if the repayment happens within a certain time period, that it would go into the geographic boundaries and you would have program income that could be invested within the specific TIF district area. And then if it were outside of that, it would go into the strategic investment fund. But fortunately, we do have more flexibility around program income. Yep.
I first wanted to recognize the huge amount of work and I have had the ability to sit in on CAFE, which has been great for me over the last six months. And I know that just over that six months, I can see the impact that this change is going to have on those conversations there. So I want to really highlight that and thank the team for that. I also think that it's going to make Prosper more effective at carrying out our work and to clarify the process internally for our team and make it more efficient and also more efficient for our borrowers, which I think is really, really important and help us do all the important work, including address our housing crisis and a whole host of other things. So I did have a question regarding process clarity. I know that's an item that a lot of our borrowers have asked us for regarding how the internal process at Prosper works to make decisions regarding loans so that they can sort of anticipate the timing and manage their own business processes. Is there a plan or next steps? Is that part of the July 1st kind of follow-up items to address that?
Yes, we'll be going back. And so we've got, we've kind of divided the project into phases. So the first phase was to redesign the products. Once those are approved by the board, then we will be redefining and refining our processes and our administrative systems. And after those initial origination systems are refined and updated, we'll be looking towards our portfolio management tools so that we will be updating and refining all of those tools that we use to not just look at a transaction, but to look at the performance of the entire loan portfolio. So yes, that, that definitely, as we're looking at our marketing and outreach, we would be looking at how do we better communicate with our client, potential clients about what they can expect in doing business with us?
That's great. I think it's particularly important because we have the ability to work with borrowers who may not have a long history of borrowing and so it's especially hard to navigate that process, even when you are experienced at it. So I think the more clarity we can provide, the more effective we will be at providing loans to different businesses and to developers and so forth. So thank you.
Commissioner, if I could add one thing on that, I think one of the things that we know is that sometimes a quicker no is better than a really drawn-out yes. And so I also think part of the process will be, you know, when, when it all goes on the website and the material is produced, I think it'll be more transparent and staff will be able to say more quickly, this just isn't something we can do now. And so hopefully, hopefully, there will be more yeses and hopefully, you know, that'll be more transparent. But I do think just that the board is aware, you might hear from folks, like, we tried and we didn't meet this and, you know, it wasn't a high-impact project. And so we will be just trying to be as transparent and consistent, Commissioner, to your point, as possible in terms of, even if you don't have a minimum of certain things, that we are using the risk rating system in a really transparent way.
I have a couple of comments, requests. One would be, I think our intent for a while now has been to increase our lending capacity and that's part of what this goes to, is to, and I really like this program, by the way. I think it'll be more efficient, more transparent. I like the idea of consolidating those various programs and making them easier for folks to understand. But it'd be great if we could maybe, as a board, hear from you folks maybe in a year or six months, maybe, just to kind of hear how things are going under the new guidelines and, you know, did they, did they yield what we are hoping they would yield or, you know, where do they leave us? That'd be great to know. Then the second thing is, as we increase our portfolio, I think we should spend a little time thinking about our process and procedures on the backend. So for collections, workouts, liquidation of collateral, negotiations with defaulted borrowers, all that stuff. And I've discussed, I discussed that a bit in the briefing session and I'm happy to, you know, help if you, if you want my input, I'm happy to help you with that, thinking on that. But I think that ought to be part of our, you know, part of our. But I think that ought to be part of our, you know, part of our new plan, too. I don't think it necessarily has to be part of this decision or this package, but it'd be nice to get that into our system, too, so that we're kind of prepared for that. Maybe we even think about at some point adding a staff person to kind of spearhead and coordinate that, because it's obviously much better to have somebody on the work outside on the backend than have that person be the same person on the front end. So, so we'll try to maybe adopt that model, so. Anyway, so those are my thoughts. Okay, do we have any other comments? Okay, then. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve or adopt resolution number 7525, approving the new guidelines?
Aye, so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thanks so much. All right, let's see, next up, we have the amended and restated financial investment policy, and Casey Edmondson will present on that.
Casey, are you going to present again, or?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back.
Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Director Branham, this is Assistant General Counsel, Casey Edmondson, here to go over the proposed adoption of the amended and restated financial investment policy. This is going to hit on a few of the things that actually came up in, in your comments just now, so this is great. We are requesting this action to support the lending program updates, but also to take this opportunity to make as many improvements as we can in, in process. So next slide, please, Justin.
And, yeah, let's, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right. So this is just a rundown a little bit of some of the current issues that, you know, we are trying to ameliorate a little bit with these changes. So it's not just to support the lending program updates and to coincide with that, but we are making changes to address a few issues, mostly to do with process, but also to do with scope. So the financial investment policy as it stands now, it's very focused on the making of transactions and the modification of contracts and that sort of thing, and less so on portfolio management. So a couple of the changes that I'll describe are explicit and directed to portfolio oversight, both on a specific, you know, one-by-one basis and overall, making that more clear. Second thing is this pesky issue of which investments are and aren't covered by the financial investment policy. In other words, which ones needed to be reviewed by our CAFE committee and which ones didn't. All good intentions to create an efficient process actually created an inefficient multiplicity of review pathways that, you know, sometimes were, you know, because of a change in the terms of a deal in the course of working it out with the borrower, a little thing changed, and consequently, an entire new avenue had to be, you know, followed to get the proper review authority, right? So one thing we tried to do is err on the side of simplicity, straightforwardness and consistency this time, not get too cute, and avoid delays that result from over-complexity. The FIP was also just very vague about the considerations that CAFE members should be taking into account when deciding whether to recommend approval or disapproval of a covered investment to the executive director or to the board. What it said wasn't wrong, but it was just underspecific. So we wanted to get into detail about that. I mentioned in the last presentation that the financial investment policy mischaracterized the executive director's authority that had been delegated by the board by resolution regarding loan-making specifically. There's a $500,000 authorization that applies to certain executive director expenditures, but it explicitly doesn't apply to loans that are made within guidelines, of board-adopted guidelines. So we wanted to fix that mischaracterization and make sure that the executive director's authority was recognized. We also wanted to, you know, oftentimes we pass program guidelines that give the executive director latitude to make tweaks that are not material in nature, but that are needed for administrative simplicity or that represent little corrections that become necessary over time. And this financial investment policy just ratifies what has been a consistent process over time for minor and immaterial changes that do not purport to expand the authority of the executive director to make those changes, which will help us make sure fewer exceptions wind up going through convoluted review processes that really don't need to. And then finally, the structure of the committee itself. The language was just inadequate in describing who the members are and how they come to be members, and a kind of a cumbersome process for the management of the roster, and we wanted to get into that, too. So next slide, please, Justin. All right, so we've mentioned a few times this risk-based pricing concept. The financial investment policy contains a long list of investment principles that guide all financial decision-making that staff engage in. Previously, risk evaluation certainly and prudent investment was a part of it, but basing pricing in part based on risk was not explicitly given that level of prominence in the process. You know, because of the latitude that we're adding to some of the process requirements and the boxes that folks have to check, we thought that it was important to maintaining portfolio quality and consistent treatment to have risk-based pricing be kind of a paradigm. So that is now recognized as an investment principle that applies to our loans, that loans will be based in part, pricing will be based in part on the risk rating. CAFE's duties regarding portfolio management have been made a lot more explicit and prominent, and they include reporting on, they include sitting as a default committee, so a regular default committee on, you know, all material defaults, and the, the parameters of that will be sketched out, but basically defaults over a certain length of time or a certain degree of materiality will have to be considered and tended to on a regular basis by CAFE, and they'll have the duty to recommend further actions to the relevant staff, to the executive director, and then if necessary, to the board confidentially if necessary, if it involves potential litigation and that sort of thing. But regularizing that process and making it an obligation of the committee is one of the changes. An additional change is a portfolio report, so a more holistic financial analysis and description. A lot of that is already stuff that is reported on in the context of budgeting or in different contexts by, by staff, but now CAFE will have an obligation to basically see to it that the assumptions we're making for portfolio performance are being met, and if not, what needs to be done to make adjustments. Covered investments, now the change will get rid of a situation where CAFE could carve out certain things from the definition of covered investments. It was a strange way it was done, that was meant to permit delegated review of small-dollar or very simple, no-exceptions-type loans by fewer than all of CAFE in the interest of expediency. But what it's ended up doing is making that determination quite critical. And so now the way it would be revised is it's simply, you know, CAFE's duty to review all of the covered investments, and there will not be these tiers based on dollar amount. And loans within guidelines will be eligible for delegated review, but any exceptions will simply need to be reviewed by CAFE. And there should be fewer of those now, and hopefully, the added simplicity will make up for any potential marginal increase in volume. Then, you know, I want to just be cognizant of everybody's time, and I won't go into the details of it because it's very, you know, wordy, but the CAFE members' duties are now spelled out, including the definition of an exception and when a CAFE member may or may not vote to recommend a covered investment, notwithstanding the fact that it has an exception. So talking about protections for the executive director, for example, regularizing the accountability of this thought process and making sure that, you know, certain findings have to be made is one of the ways that we are, you know, making sure that the sort of more permissive set of guidelines doesn't create a situation where there's inconsistent application of any of our rules. And then Section 5.2 of the new policy, you know, it clarifies the executive director's authority to make those changes I described earlier. And CAFE members can be appointed not just, you know, on a one-off basis by the executive director with the board chair's concurrents, but can be designated as staff positions, sort of, sort of a permanent seat, which is really, in practice, the way it's done, and that regular changes to the membership that result from, for example, a retirement. Let's imagine the staff member who is in a position that's on CAFE were to retire, and then somebody new takes that position. The executive director wouldn't have to consult with the board chair in connection with, you know, automatic changes like that, but would, consistent with the current policy, still have to consult before adding or removing a member outside of those sort of automatic contexts? So just trying to simplify the administration of this and fix that aspect of it. So that's the key changes. There's also a lot of small ones that I'm sure are fascinating to, to everybody that I'm happy to discuss, but I'll take any questions that you might have.
Go back to that last slide for a second. So the fourth bullet point says, CAFE members' duties and scope of discretion clarified, Section 3.4. I just noticed there is no Section 3.4 in the guidelines, so.
That, thank you for catching that. We noticed that ourselves when the document was processed for compilation into the packet, the Microsoft Word, the joys of it, reordered Section 3.3, starting as 3.1.
Okay.
So those, we, yeah, we've corrected those.
So 3.4 then would be, the 3.4 referred to there would be 3.1, is what you're saying, right?
It is the section headed review requirements.
Oh, 3.2. Okay. Okay, great. Do you have any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. This sounds, sounds helpful, so thanks for all your, all the work on that. Would someone like to make, to make a motion to approve Resolution number 7524, adopting an amended and restated financial investment policy?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks very much. Yeah. Okay, our next item is an action item. This is number nine, authorizing a disposition and development agreement to convey approximately 33,071 square feet of Prosper Portland-owned property in the Lentz Town Center Tax Increment Finance District. And Brian Moore and Wendell Kador will present. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. I'm Brian Moore, Development Manager with Prosper's Development and Investments Team. With me is Wendell Kador, Project Manager on my team. And I believe we have the developer, Robert Gibson, online as well, if there's questions at the end of the presentation. So our, our Development and Investment Team has been working toward the implementation of the Lentz Action Plan and closeout of the Lentz TIF District in anticipation of possible new TIF districts this fall. One priority is the disposition of remaining property within, that has development potential. Next slide, please. To that end, we are requesting acceptance of an offer from Palindrom Communities LLC to purchase the AIP property for $1,755,000, and other negotiated terms and conditions identified in the Development and Disposition Agreement. Next slide, please. So Palindrom's intent is to develop the AIP property as part of a larger holding, larger lodging concept and other property holdings it has in the immediate area. The concept would include the adjacent properties that they recently purchased. The action, putting this site into play for development, really makes progress towards outcomes 3.6 and 3.8 in advanced Portland by converting an underdeveloped site into higher-density, more intense use, mixed use, that will include a significant amount of new residential units. Next slide, please. Further, this project will intensify the land use in the Lentz Town Center, generate resources for our strategic investment fund, and eliminate ongoing property management costs. I'd like to hand it over to Wendell to discuss more of the project's specifics. Next slide.
Okay, is that better? Okay. A little background information on the site. The Architectural Ironworks property was purchased in December 2008 from Ola Kavalinko to facilitate implementation of the Lentz Town Center revitalization. This strategy was focused on the redevelopment or development of blighted, underused, unutilized land and buildings to help create jobs, housing opportunities, while capitalizing on the addition of the Max Green Line. Next slide, please. Here are some of the projects that have been, recently been built in the Lentz URA. The top one is from Palindrom. It is called Oliver Station, it's located on southeast, southeast Foster. It is directly across the street from the AIP project. It's a five-story mixed-use project. The second picture is the Lentz Community Plaza. Palindrom is built fat. They also have the Z House, which is a brewery and a brew pub and a food hall. The bakery block's development is, is right connected to the Z House. It is a festival hall, but also home of the Lentz Farmer's Market. The last picture on the right is the Phoenix Pharmacy that was recently developed with the help of Prosper. The developer is Matt Frohman. The property had fallen into disrepair, and Matt is a local developer that lived in the neighborhood, and with the help of Prosper brought it back to life, and now it's one of the jewels of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Some of the terms of the offer, as Brian said earlier, Palindrom's offer is $1,755,000. That price is exactly what the property has been appraised for. Earnest money is $100,000, paid in 10 days after the effective date. The bakery block's development is, is right connected to the Z House. It is a festival hall, but also home of the Lent's Farmers Market. The last picture on the right is the Phoenix Pharmacy that was recently developed with the help of Prosper. The developer is Matt Frohman. The property had fallen into disrepair. And Matt is a local developer that lived in the neighborhood and with the help of Prosper brought it back to life. And now it's one of the jewels of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Some of the terms of the offer, as Brian said earlier, Palindrom's offer is $1,755,000. That price is exactly what the property has been appraised for. Earnest money is $100,000, paid in 10 days after the effective date. It becomes non-refundable on the date of the developer delivers the due diligence and contingencies. Earnest money credited against the purchase price. There are contingencies, mutual conditions, developer conditions, and Prosper conditions listed in the key terms. Next slide, please. Prosper will require compliance with Construction and Business Workforce Equity Policy. The policy has set a goal of 22% MWE SB participation for the hard construction costs and 20%, of professional services cost. Developers are required to make a good faith effort towards meeting those goals. Next slide, please. Thank you, and we'll take any questions, if any.
Questions?
I have a question. Is the closing of the transaction contingent upon the buyer securing debt?
Securing debt for the development of the site?
Yes, or for the acquisition.
No, not this particular acquisition.
Okay, great.
Okay. I had a quick question, Brian. So the developer is online right now?
That's my understanding, yes.
Do we know what the performance under the workforce equity policy, the workforce and, sorry, the construction building workforce equity or construction business and workforce equity policy? Sorry, changed the name a few times, but... Do we know what the performance was on the last project that they did?
We do have performance indicators for the, the last couple of projects that they've worked with us on. We have them online. I unfortunately don't have them. I don't have that data as part of the staff report, though. I can prove...
Ahead.
There he is.
Robert, can you hear us?
I can, yeah. Thank you. Brian, I don't have that data in front of me either. I don't know. Sorry, I didn't know that. I know that we have satisfied the requirements, but I don't know the exact metrics.
Okay. Are we planning to make sure that the contractor that you choose to help you build this project will work with the Prosper team to ensure that we hit the maximums? We hit that, hit that, the, the requirements that we're expecting on this, for that?
Absolutely. Commissioner Myers, that is our, it's part of our DNA. And we've worked with Prosper Portland over the last 10 years on a number of projects. In addition to working with the city of Portland, we have a number of other public-private partnerships and work with Oregon Housing. So in terms of working with, on the front end with designers and consultants, we typically exceed the goals for participation. And then the same is true for construction. We have met with Wendy Wilcox at Prosper Portland probably three or four times a year and are very up to speed on the requirements. And our, our goal is to continue to, to meet those requirements.
Thank you very much.
If I can, I have one note on that, just a little bit of a self-promotion of, you know, we, in the Lent's community, even when we haven't been required to meet those goals, if you went over to the food hall that Wendell described in his presentation, the, I think almost every vendor that has opened a small business, I think there's eight of them, every single one of them would be a success story as far as someone who is a first-time business owner or a minority-owned business. And that, you know, it wasn't really by accident. Maybe that was a choice that we really wanted to ensure that there were opportunities for small business owners and disadvantaged business owners to have a, an opportunity to grow a business. So not only in our food hall, but also in participating with the Commercial Affordability Program. I know that has been probably an underutilized program, but we've been successful in bringing tenants into the Oliver Station commercial space and have women-owned and minority-owned businesses that have been in place prior to COVID and that continue to be successful. So it's really important to us to continue those efforts in Lent's. Thank you.
You. Mr. Gibson, did you have anything else you wanted to add? And if not, then we'll, I understand what you have. We have some additional public testimony as well.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I believe we have five people here to provide public testimony. And what I'd like to do, if, if you wouldn't mind, maybe sitting down, you could come back afterwards. And if there's issues, we can address them before we vote. So why don't we start with Michael Coughlin with Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters, Santino Juarez, a local carpenter. And I apologize, I'm not sure I've got this right, but it looks like Tramus, Trampus Simmons? Yes, thank you. Also carpenter. So all three of you will each have three minutes. So not three in total, but each have three. So, okay. So, all right, great. So who would like to go first?
Greetings. Good evening, everyone. My name's Santino Juarez, and I'm a local carpenter that works here in the Portland metro area. One of the things that I heard a lot in this meeting today, that I like that term, was removing barriers. And I hope that that's the true vision of this team that's right here. As we are here talking about removing barriers, I hope that it's not just for developers and construction managers that are normally the ones that profit on top without thinking about the guy, the men and women that will work on this project to make this site to come into true frutation. As we're here this evening, as I'm standing in this room of community leaders, I hope that we are not just thinking about removing barriers to make it easier for developers, but that we are also taking in consideration the working class and the people that will build and use their hands to build these things. I want to share with you guys a few moments real quick about a couple practices that have been gone on in the area by illicit contractors and so-called community partners like Palindrom. I have received phone calls from workers that have gone six to seven weeks without pay. Talk about inflation, a cost of living rise in our area that we know as leaders, that as Portland leaders, we have to factor in. What a way to make a living, huh? And not only workers were not being paid, but they are, they are, they are paid under the table. They are treated like a commodity. And as you and I know here, tax fraud and wage theft is a common practice and very high in the construction industry. My question for this team and my ask for this room of leaders is that what are we doing to ensure that the working class will be protected? What's to ensure, what language is put into play that the people that work on this project will not fall victim to wage theft, tax fraud, and missing rent payments and so on and so forth? Not just talking about removing barriers this evening, but speaking about removing barriers for the community, the people that work here. And also, what is in your language that's going to protect people that look just like me? What's in your wording that shows transparency, not just for the loan department, but transparency for criminal contractors that take advantage of the local community? That is all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and the Board. My name is Michael Coughlin. You know it right on the head. Palindrom Communities has past practices of hiring irresponsible general contractors and in turn hiring irresponsible subcontractors. Immigrant labor abuse, tax, tax fraud, wage theft, extortion are things that we fight every single day. These are things that happen every single day in, in Portland and in the construction trade in general. For this project, we will be looking at it very hard. We really hope that y'all do too, being the leaders of this city. Every step of the way, ensuring that Palindrom Communities does the right thing. I don't even mention minority-owned businesses. I hear immigrant labor abuse. That's what I hear when I hear this individual speaking of that based off the fact that there are still workers that haven't got paid from this company or the subcontractors they have hired. Criminal activity. So we will be looking at this. And our, our ask is that you, you follow this every step of the way. And if they step out of line, we have to do something about it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Trampus Simmons. I'm a representative of the many skilled workers that are in this community. I had a chance to review Prosper Portland's website today. And under "Our Values," it says, "Make a difference. Get things done and strive to have a marked impact on the lives of all the people of Portland." With Prosper Portland, the only people that are truly prospering right now are the developers. They come into Portland. They make a quick dollar, and they leave in their wake victims and their families. So it also says, "Honor the public trust. We seek financial sustainability. And as stewards of the public, resources act for good of the city with integrity and ethics." Proper Portland, please answer this question. If we truly seek financial sustainability and truly are stewards of the public resources and are going to act for the good of the city with integrity and ethics, why would Prosper Portland allow one of the city's most precious resources to a developer that is not considering what Portland actually needs to prosper? High-density housing, or high-density and affordable housing. We need to be able to maximize and utilize our lands to our fullest potential. We also are allowing them to take advantage of another resource, a very precious resource. This is our workforce. As the people before me had said, this developer had had a previous project. You've also heard that they weren't paid. As of 10:00 AM this morning, they still haven't been paid. How long do these workers have to wait? Could any of you afford to miss seven, eight weeks of pay being the sole income in your family? Is that being good stewards? So on this project, this developer had a contractor, JP Pro. JP Pro was just fined $37,000 for not paying the workers even on a prevailing wage. There are two more cases out there outstanding with agencies right now in the works, the same contractor. This was the contractor they chose. How are we going to reimburse all these workers for the missed car payments, the rent payments? How are we going to do that? As we see, even on a prevailing wage project, this happens. What kind of protections does the city have in place? What kind of enforcement mechanisms does the city have to ensure that this doesn't happen to the next group of carpenters? Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have two more folks, if they're still here. Sanai Hennessy and Heather Mather. I believe they're both with the carpenters group as well.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Heather Mather. I'm a proud union carpenter out of Portland. I just wanted to touch again on this project. You know, as stewards of public resources, Prosper Portland does have a responsibility to ensure that this project is truly benefiting the Lent's community for the development of this property. I read through this 33 pages just a bit ago. Section 7, Development, 7.1, it talks about Prosper Portland policies on construction. And thank you, Willie Myers, workforce equity. 7.1.2 talks about the development compliance. There were four paragraphs that went into lead, gold, and green building, right? Doesn't mention the need for denser buildings to accommodate this huge influx that we are seeing in this community with the growth. This is also ever-important for small parcels like this. We know how valuable our land is and those resources. I wanted to echo my brother's sentiments regarding the workforce and responsible contractors. You know, the tax fraud, the wage theft. I was the first one to get a call on one of these projects in this, on this block. You know, several workers that, again, still have not gotten paid. I can't tell you how many months ago I got that first call with the first wave of workers. What brother is referring to is not the first or the second wave of workers that had to get paid, but the last. I am from Lent's neighborhood. As you guys know, this is a very vulnerable community. It is a community where exploitation is very rampant. And again, being a vulnerable community, who can afford to work in this community, live in this community, and still not get paid to live in this community? It's mind-boggling to me. I am the sole provider of my family. I know seven to eight weeks would detriment me, and I have a pretty decent savings. But my ask for today, prior to hiring a GC, the developer must consult with Prosper Portland, excuse me, compliance personnel. We know that. We read it in the 33 pages. But again, my ask is that you take a serious look into the GC's past practices and the subcontractors that they hire to ensure that this really aligns with Prosper Portland's mission and what they're trying to do for this community. I thank you for your time.
Great. Hello? Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Director Branham. For the record, my name is Sanai Hennessy, and I am with the Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent about 90,000 members throughout 12 states. Here locally, we represent nearly 5,000. And I'd like to make an emphasis on the keyword "local." Locally, we represent 5,000 workers that are willing and ready to go to work. And they want an opportunity to do that right here on this project. We understand the vital role that the construction industry plays in driving the nation's economy. Just like each and every one of you represented here in the room, since we've been here, we've heard a lot about money, right? Everything that has gone before has been about money. So we understand that. Skilled workforce is responsible for building, for maintaining our homes. They're responsible for building and maintaining our bridges and our roadways. Everywhere, it's essential for our daily lives. The construction industry is one of the largest employment sectors in the country. And I'm here to discuss the important topic of local hiring. There have been a lot of things said here about Palindrom and their practices or lack of practices. One thing, if we're going to do a level set and of course correct, one thing that I would like for them to consider, and Mr. Robert, if you're still on the line, is to consider the local workforce as you're developing this mixed-use property. It's essential to prioritize that. And my testimony was going to go one way, but I feel like it needs to go another as we look at the local workforce and make sure that they are being paid for the work that they are doing. Developers are paid. They are creating generational wealth for their families. Some of them are staying here. Some of them are going back to where their headquarters are. And they are taking that wealth with them. They're taking it out of our community, our communities. They're taking it out of the mouths of the local workforce. And we cannot afford for that to happen. When you look at the definition... When you look at the definition of Palindrom, it's a phrase, it's a number, it's symbols. Any way that you do them, backwards, forwards, it remains the same. We cannot afford to do business in Oregon the same way that we have been doing it. It will have a financial impact on our communities, and most importantly, it will have a financial impact on the local workers. These workers should be able to work, to live, to thrive in these communities. Their families should be able to work, to live, to thrive, to shop in these communities. As it stands right now, a lot of workers are not able to live in the communities where they work. So the ask is that Palindrom hire locally, and let's take care of our own, because they're going to take care of theirs. Thank you for your time.
Thanks to all of you for your comments. Okay. Brian and Wendell, would you like to come back to the hot seat and discuss this a little further with us? So, and I don't know if Mr. Gibson's still on the line, but would anybody like to, you know, we were not, as a board, were not, did not have a preview of any of these comments, and so it'd be great to have a little feedback, to the extent you guys have some thoughts about these comments that we just received. That would be very helpful.
Certainly. I can speak a bit to the targets on the previous project, which was the bakery blocks at 92nd and Ramona. And I was in communication with our compliance officer, and they were able to confirm that on that particular project, there are some of our targets that were not met. However, throughout the process, Palindrom remained in close communication with our compliance officer, updating them about the situation and what had occurred as to why the targets were not being met. And it was determined that because the project did not meet the hour threshold that we have in policy of 300 hours, 300 work hours, that the penalties were not assessed for that particular project.
What about addressing some of the concerns that we've heard here today about fraud, folks not being paid? And as of today, do we know if folks are still not being paid? Because that is very concerning for the Lentz community, because it is an underrepresented and under-resourced community. So have those issues been addressed?
My question, I'm sorry. To respond to the question, I believe that we would need Palindrom to respond to the status of any disputes that they have with any of their contractors or subcontractors. I can say with confidence that our current policies will be fully implemented and enforced on the transaction before you today. And because it will be a larger project in terms of its scope and scale, because it'll be a new build as opposed to a renovation, that it will exceed the 300-hour threshold, and so that failure to meet the policies will carry with it our normal financial penalties.
I'm not sure that we know which project is being talked about, and so that might be helpful clarification. I think the most recent project that we had was the bakery blocks, which was the rehab facility, but that ended, well, so that's what we know. But we, this is the first time that we're hearing about it as well.
But we have, we'll be monitoring, this is, so what you're saying is this is one, because of the size and the scope, this is one that we'll be actively monitoring, unlike the prior one? Yeah.
We were actively monitoring the prior one as well.
Right, but it was below the 300 hours, and so didn't have quite the level of scrutiny. But yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I've got a couple of follow-ups here. So one of the things I'd really like to see, and I know Willnum County has adopted something very similar, where it's kind of a deputization, where if there is an issue with the workforce, that there's a couple people that could get permitted to go and talk to them outside of the work time period. I know this may not necessarily fall under a public project rules, because we're selling the property, but we're able to attach the workforce training and hiring policy, or excuse me. Construction business and workforce equity policy. With our policies to ensure that they're being followed, we definitely have staff that can do that. We definitely have staff that will follow up, not just with the developer, but with those contractors that are selected by that developer.
Yes, our staff does work directly with the general contractor to walk them through the policy expectations, and when they're struggling to meet them, we provide them technical services to help them achieve those and can forward them on to others as well if they need additional assistance.
So since it is in a public project, we're not necessarily at risk, but the developer is going to be at risk if there are unmet wages that are not paid by a contractor that they selected. So to put that insurance policy in there, to make sure we have like an audit of the workforce and have conversations with the workforce at some point, maybe we'll talk, have a conversation with Wendy as she's doing this, and maybe it's somebody else, I don't know, but to actually interview a few folks, you know, make sure that this isn't happening again.
And is it possible to do prior to?
Yeah, and I just want to, so I want to note that what our business and workforce equity policy looks at is, and this is probably what Lisa's going to talk about, but the issue, and, you know, we've had conversations with carpenters, the carpenters around this, and I think one of the things that we've been thinking about is particularly looking at bully fines and having conversations around that that have been levied. I think we've had some conversations, and it is, right now, within our business and workforce equity policy, we're not necessarily looking at wage theft. That isn't something that we have been looking closely at. We've been looking at business and workforce equity. So I don't know, Lisa, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I think I was also, before I speak to that, I was just going to pick up, so on our projects, our compliance officer goes out, because we're holding the GC contract, goes out and actually speaks with subs and speaks with workforce onsite. Sorry, I was just texting with Wendy, just to see if we have the capacity. We have talked about on other projects, and the board could certainly kind of provide us the direction, and we can follow it, that Wendy be available to go out onsite on this project when it actually goes into construction to understand what's happening for various subs and workforce on the site. So that's one thing. I do want to, I don't know that we will ever have complete insight into what is happening with payment. That is a much tougher thing to kind of pursue, but certainly, we would have better information from what's happening onsite, speaking with particular subs and their labor who are onsite. And then I do want to just honor, kind of to get to Kimberly's point, is we have also had conversations about how do we make sure that we are tracking who's out of compliance or in a penalty mode with bully and pass that information on to our development partners to ensure that they are both aware of that and shying away from using those particular contractors on job sites, because we know that they are not in good stead.
A little tougher on privately-owned projects, but I think in our policy, I think you're right. I think we could put something at least that flags someone who's at least debarred for failure to comply with state law. I think that's something that we should flag for our developers.
Okay, then. Well, then, as part of our approval of this item, why don't we add Wendy's participation? That was a subtle hint. And yes, if there's anything else, oh, go ahead.
I would just want to, I just want to ask, so when we hear things of this sort, is there not a way to do, even though it's private, or it's not public, sorry, any type of investigation or any safeguards are we allowed to put in place?
I do think we defer to bully on that, because they have, that's the mechanism in terms of that investigation. Again? And enforcement. And so I think that's, and, you know, we have been in situations where there are dueling perspectives between the general contractor and the subcontractor about whose responsibility it was, and that disagreement is, you know, there are legal considerations, and then it ends up, you know, having impact, and it's really challenging for us to get in the middle of that. But that's part of why it feels like it's really important to be aware of when bully does issue fines, because they have such a thorough process and those findings. And so I think one of the things we've talked about and had the conversation, and just to preview our business and workforce, or updated business and workforce equity policy will be coming to you in the next, yeah, in April or May. I think, you know, having visibility on this was something that in the conversation we had a few months ago of just being aware of whether a contractor or subcontractor has had fines levied in a specific time period, for what purpose, and potentially having that as part of the business and workforce equity policy might be something that would help kind of bring these issues to light.
Hey, Kimberly, can I also just add, I think, I have to think about the timing, and so, but I think it's also likely that if the projects that are being referenced are projects that are Phase 1 of Lentz, we did not have the safe-from-hate language that is currently in our current policy, and so they will have to satisfy the safe-from-hate kind of programming and onsite training that has to happen with their contractor that was not in effect when the last phase of Lentz projects occurred.
So Wendy would be our safeguard for this particular?
Yeah, and we're also, yes, we would have our staff person onsite, and we have more robust language around safe-from-hate practices on the job site in our current policy that is the one that would be required for this project than we had with past projects that we partnered with Palindrom on in Lentz.
Look, we also communicate this back to Palindrom. I'm taking that Mr. Gibson's not on the line anymore. He is?
I'm on.
Oh, are you? You haven't even?
Until someone asked me a direct question.
Yes, well, here we go.
I'm letting the conversation go. Yeah, I don't know if I want some.
All right, yes, you asked for it. What's your perspective on these comments?
Oh, I welcome the comment, the testimony of the union, that's members that are there. I think our principles align with them. Personally, my father retired as a, under a carpenter's local 945 in southwest Missouri. Worked there for 20 years as a carpenter, as a union carpenter. So those are the comments and things that they're saying are part of my DNA. What they're referring to is it is a privately-funded project, and, oh, I wish I knew that the subcontractor that we hired, and unfortunately had to terminate, wasn't paying their workers. It wasn't something that we were participating in, and I think it was kind of, maybe some of the testimony made it sound like it's systemic, or painted us with a broad brush that were, those are things that we stand behind, and they're not. It was, I think, Director Branham mentioned that there's oftentimes legal considerations in terms of contracts, and we terminated the bad actor, the subcontractor JP Pro that wasn't paying their workers. In fact, we were withholding payment and making sure that they were paying their workers directly, but we weren't, we didn't have the ability to audit their books. And they, we had a contract with them, and they provided services, and we paid them. So, yeah, we wouldn't hire them again, and because of the situation at, it's at 92nd and Ramona, a project that does have inclusionary housing in it, we will have increased our pre-construction due diligence to make sure that we know more about the practices of the subcontractors that we're hiring. On smaller projects, it's more challenging, because you have, you know, you're in between what I call pickup truck contractors that just do really small, single-family home projects and large commercial projects. The project that we had a problem on was 47 units, so you don't get the luxury of using larger contractors, so we thought we picked the best one. But we learned our lesson. It wasn't, it's not something that we, you know, it's not part of our practice. It was a mistake, and we'll do better to protect the workers and our subcontractors going forward. In terms of whether they've been paid, we paid the subcontractor under our obligation, but we don't have any control over what they do with the money after we pay them under the contract.
Thank you. Thanks. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Gibson or staff or anybody?
Yeah, I just have one real quick comment. I, you know, it's in your DNA. Reach out to them. The folks that testified here today, I urge you to reach out to them. I think they can also offer you up some solutions that would help you achieve all of the other expectations that are placed on you as a developer, that are laid out in the project language, in the, sorry, the CBWPP. Fourth time, I've done it wrong. So, but reach out to them. I think that they may have some ideas that could help you out.
And I would just ask, really be considerate and really think about the communities in which it is, because it is an under-resourced community, and jobs are important to that community, and really, most of the communities in Portland, as the environment is showing us, there was a lot that happened during COVID and after COVID, and folks are really needing jobs in order to thrive, in order to take care of their families. So I think reaching out to them is really important, and really putting some safeguards in place, making sure that the subcontractor is really living up to what they're supposed to be doing and going forward.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. With all that being said, then, and with the additional, you know, comments that we made, would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7526?
I so move.
Thank you. No second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. All right. Thanks to everybody for your work on this and for your comments. Thanks to our visitors today. Appreciate it. Okay. Well, if nobody has anything further, we will now adjourn our Commissioners' meeting for today. Thank you.